Hello and welcome. My name is Calliope and I'm going to be your Bowen Therapy Technician today. How are you doing today? Okay, well I hope by the time you leave this session, you feel even just the littlest bit better. Do you mind if I ask you a few questions before we begin? Okay, let me grab my notes here. So let's see. Would you mind just confirming your name for me? Excellent, and is that your preferred name? And how would you like to be addressed? Okay. That's perfect, thank you. So, do you have any particular reason that you wanted to visit me today? Are you coming for any sort of ailment or pain at all? Okay, alright. That's wonderful, okay. And besides that, do you have any other illness or any sort of injury that I should be aware of? Even any recent surgeries perhaps? Okay, very good, thank you. And lastly, are you on any medications at all? Okay, that's great, wonderful. So I'm just going to real quick sanitize my hands and we'll talk a little bit about what we're gonna be doing today. There we are. Very good. So, have you ever had a Bowen Therapy session before? Okay, do you know what it's about? Alright, well if you'd like I can explain a little bit about what's gonna be going on, what kind of the philosophy is. Alright, that's great. So, Bowen Therapy is very similar, but not quite to massage. It's a type of body work. So, I would put it more on par with perhaps chiropractic work rather than massage, but on the outside it looks more like massage. It's a very, very gentle therapy and we can use it on people that have a more delicate constitution. We can use it on younger people. It's very gentle. We're not really using that much pressure at all and we're not going into any deep tissue work. Bowen Therapy works on fascia and fascia covers your whole body. It's a connective tissue and we're working with that fascia to help it release. And we're also trying to stimulate the nerve endings so that your body can work with that information and pay more attention to different areas. So, there are thousands, thousands of nerve endings in your body, right? And it wouldn't be super surprising if sometimes your wires get crossed or sometimes information is not being relayed properly. And in those instances, we can get stiffness. We can get pain. We can get loss of flexibility, mobility, what have you. And we're just going to be stimulating those different points so that your body takes that information and then it realizes that there's something going on there and it needs to fix it. So, we're not necessarily fixing things. We are giving your body the tools and information so that it can fix itself, okay? Does that make sense? Yeah, so we're just going to be essentially... Say you were having, you know, a lot of issues with your shoulders. We would be touching in different places on your shoulders so that we're trying to stimulate those nerve endings so that your body can take that information, that stimulation, and realize that there's something going on that it needs to start working on. So it's kind of a holistic sort of modality. So as far as the moves go, this is where the kind of akin to massage thing comes in. In Bowen Therapy, we use one very special move and it involves a rolling of the skin. So what I'm going to be doing is either with my thumbs together or my fingertips. You press into the skin and with the slack that you get from that, you pull back. And that pressing in and pulling back motion helps to stimulate those nerves. Let me see if I can just... I can just try to show you on my arm here. So you're pressing in and with that slack that you're getting, you pull back. So, press in, pull back. Just like that. It's a little hard to show on myself because I'm not able to use both of my hands, but you'll feel what I'm talking about and I'll guide you through everything that we're doing, okay? Alright, so Bowen Therapy is great for people with injuries or pain conditions, acute or chronic. It's also good for anxiety or insomnia, hypersomnia, these sort of mental health issues. We're really working with the body to promote that healing that the body should be able to do on its own, but maybe is having a little bit of a tough time with it, okay? So I want to do just a quick little assessment of you, alright? So if you could just stand like you are, but I'm gonna have you move your feet so that they're hip width apart. And I want you to just stand there for me, okay? Alright, so... Just wanna have... A little look around. Okay. So, I can see here, your shoulders are really rolled forward and they're also higher up, right? Do you notice that you have a lot of pain in your neck and shoulder area? Okay. Do you do a lot of slouching or looking down, say it like a computer or your phone? Okay, so that, that's a big... It's a pretty common issue, but that is a big issue that we can address today. So, first I just want to kind of settle your shoulders down a little bit and we're gonna roll them back, okay? So just go ahead and let your shoulders drop and then let's roll them back, okay? Just a little bit. We're just gonna open the chest a little bit, okay? So with Bowen, we're trying to just guide the body. We don't wanna force it. So we're doing just little, little tiny moves, okay? But I just want to open that up just a little bit. Okay, how does that feel? Yeah, almost a little unnatural, certainly. I mean, when your, when your body is hunched forward so much, you get a lot of tension in the chest area. You can experience chest pain from all those muscles, all tensed up and with the rounding of the shoulders, that can have a bit of an issue. So, we just wanna very gently allow the body to realize that it needs to be in a better position and that it'll be easier for your body to, to adapt to that position, okay? I'm just gonna look at you a little bit more. Okay. How does your head feel on top of your shoulders? Do you feel like you're leaning forward, leaning back? Okay, it's a bit, it's a bit forward, okay. So yeah, your neck, your neck's crunched a bit. So, we'll really work in that area and make sure that we're, we're telling the body that it doesn't need to compensate, that it doesn't need to bend forward so much, okay? Alright, so real quick, I want to check your TMJ. And how I'm going to do that is, I'm going to have you just have your, your hand open for me and I'm gonna try to pull on your fingers. And I'm gonna have you resist me. I'm gonna have you open and close your mouth and we're gonna see if that has any effect on, on how you can resist me. So in Bowen, we have this thought that if you have something that's interrupting the flow of energy, if something is blocking it, you can find that if you're trying to do certain moves that your body won't really register that information because there's a block. And so we're checking your TMJ and seeing if there's any, anything out of alignment. And if there is, when we're trying to test something else while that area is doing a different activity, then it's not going to register and we're gonna be able to just pull your fingers even when you're trying to resist us, right? Okay, so, I'm gonna have you just relax your arm and curl your fingers, okay? And I'm just going to have you try to resist me pulling them open, just normal, okay? Alright, so it'll be that kind of pressure. And if you could open your jaw for me? Okay? Good, and I'm gonna try to pull your fingers. I want you to resist me. Okay, and go ahead and close that. And try to resist me. And can you clench your jaw for me? And try to resist me. Okay, you can go ahead and relax your jaw. So how was that for you? Alright, yeah, I didn't find anything different in that, so I don't think there's any, anything out of alignment there. But when we have you laying on the table, we will try that again, just in case, okay? And then we can address that. Alright. Alright, so... Think... Think that's all I need from you. So, what we're gonna do is, as you can see, there is a massage table behind you, right? And I'm gonna have you lay down. We're gonna start face down. So I'm gonna have you put your face into the little cradle, okay? And then we're going to work from there. We'll do both the back of your body and the front of your body, okay? And a trademark of Bowen is little breaks in between moves. So I might do between two to six different moves with the, the rolling sort of movement. And then we might take a little break. And some people like to completely leave the room. Some people like to just step back. I personally prefer to have my client take some deep breaths with me because what we wanna do is let your body take in that information, take in those different moves that we've done, and then digest it. We want your body to process what we've just done. And until your body has processed that, we don't want to do any more work that might give it too much information, okay? Right, so, we'll do some moves. We'll take a little pause and do some deep breathing and really, really get you relaxed and loose and limp. And we'll just go through the treatment like that, okay? Alright, do you have any questions for me at all? Yeah, so we are not gonna be using any oil and you can keep all your clothing on. It's done over clothing, no problem with that. And it's just very gentle movements. Mm-hmm, nothing special. Alright, any other questions? Okay, that's great. So I'm gonna go ahead and have you lie down and we will get started with your treatment. Okay, so, we have you lying face down and your head is cradled by this padded, open pillow here. Are you comfortable? Okay, is there anything else I can do to make you more comfortable? Alright, well, just let me know if at any point, okay? Alright, so, we're gonna get started first by just working on your lower back, okay? So I'm going to be doing a few moves and then we're gonna take a pause and do some deep breathing, okay? Like we had talked about. And we'll just go through everything and I'll tell you a little bit about what I'm doing while we're doing it, okay? Alright, if you have any questions at any point, just go ahead and speak up, alright? Okay, so, let's start with the lower back here, okay? So I'm just going to go ahead and push in and then use the slack of the skin to pull back, okay? Just like that, alright? So I'm gonna reach to the other side and I'm gonna push in with my fingertips and then pull back, okay? Just like that, that's it. We're gonna move a little lower and go ahead and push in with my thumbs and pull back, okay? And then again, I'm just going to push in with my fingertips and pull back, alright? And I'm just going to take my hands off and we're going to relax. We're gonna relax for just a few moments and let your body adjust as it needs to. Take a deep breath in for me. And out. Okay, how does that feel? Do you feel any sort of looseness or any, any limpness at all? Perhaps even a touch of a heavy feeling? Okay, that's kind of what we're looking for is just that loose and limp feeling, alright? Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead and keep going on here. So I'm just gonna give you a couple more deep breaths and then we'll move on with the, with the body work. Take a deep breath in. And out. Take a deep breath in. And out. Good, 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 good. That's great. So, let's go ahead and work. We're gonna get to your upper leg here. So, I'm just going to gonna map out the position that I need to be in here. So, my hands are gonna be in a few different positions on your leg and then... Okay, so that's about the spot that I wanna be. I'm just gonna go ahead and push in and then pull back, okay? And then, with your other leg here, just wanna map that out real quick. Okay, and then I'm gonna push in and pull back, alright? And we're gonna take our hands off. So that's how our work is going to be going, just doing a couple moves and then taking a little rest, letting your body sort of accept that information, accept the nerve endings that we're trying to stimulate. And then we can let your body get new information once it's accepted that information, okay? So, take a deep breath in for me. And out. Deep breath in for me. And out. That's great, okay? So let's go ahead and I'm going to come to your lower back again here, but a little lower, right? About right here, okay? And I'm just going to be pushing in the skin and then pulling back from the slack, okay? The other side, pushing in and pulling back out, alright? So, I'm gonna go ahead and move to the upper back here. So right, let me see. Right about here, okay? I'm gonna use my thumbs and I'm just going to press in, pull back, okay? Press in, pull back. And let's do here. So we're going to press in and pull back. And press in and pull back. Okay, and then let's do one more position here. So I'm just going to press in, pull back, and press in, and pull back, okay? I'm gonna take my hands off and I'll just have you take a deep breath in. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Very good, that's great. So let's see... I think we're gonna work a little bit on the shoulders here, okay? So let me just map this out a bit. Everybody's body is different and helps to be a little more precise in the movements, okay? So I'm just gonna take my fingertips here and we're gonna press in and then pull back, okay? And press in, pull back. Very good. And then on your upper back here, we're just going to press in, pull back, and press in, and pull back, okay? Alright, that's great, so, we're gonna take another pause and take a deep breath in. And go ahead and just breathe out. Very good. Deep breath in. And out. Okay, let's do that one more time. Deep breath in. And out. Okay, so now I'm gonna work into the... We're gonna start with the lower back here, okay? And we're gonna work up the spine a bit. So I just want to press my fingertips in here and then pull back. And on the other side, I'm gonna press my thumbs in and pull back. Very good, and we're gonna work up a little bit. Press in, pull back, okay? And press in and pull back. And press in, pull back. Press in, pull back. And lastly, we're gonna stop right in the middle of your back here. Press in and pull back on the skin. Press in and pull back, okay? Very good, alright. We're gonna take a little rest again. How are you feeling by the way here? You doing alright? Okay, is everything comfortable for you? That's great, okay. Let's go ahead and take a deep breath in. And breathe out. Deep breath in. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Okay, so I want you to go ahead and turn your head to the left for me, okay? And then I'm just going to be moving your leg up a bit. I'm gonna be lifting your leg and I'm gonna be working on your back at the same time, okay? Go ahead and turn your head, alright? And then I'm just going to lift up your left leg here. Alright, and I have my hand on your back. I want you to take a deep breath in for me. And out. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and put your leg down. And then if you could turn your head to the right for me? Mm-hmm. I'm just gonna lift up your leg here, put my hand on your back. If you could take a deep breath in for me? Okay, and out. Very good, and I'm gonna set your leg back down, okay? Alright, so, we are finished with the back portion of our Bowen work here. And I want you to go ahead and just very gently just flip over, okay? So that your head is facing up, alright? Yep, I'll just give you a few moments, okay? Just get situated and then I'm gonna have you move down the massage table a bit so that your head's not laying in that cradle anymore, okay? Alright, very good. So are you comfortable like this? Alright, everything's good? That's great. So, we're gonna go ahead and work in the diaphragm area first, okay? So I'm just going to be... This can be a bit of a tender area, but don't worry, I'll be very gentle, just like all the other moves have been gentle, okay? So we're just going to press in and pull out, okay? Press in and pull back. And press in and pull back. And press in and pull back, okay? Then we're gonna relax for a few moments, okay? Relax, relax, relax. Relax, relax. Alright, take a deep breath in for me. And release. Okay. Now let's go ahead and I'm gonna work near your clavicles here. So, just going to press in, release, and then press in, release, one on each side. And we're gonna let you relax for a moment. Take a deep breath in. And out. Okay? And now I'm gonna be kind of working around your head a little bit here, okay? So I'm gonna be a little closed off, but I'm just going to be working around your head. I'm kind of measuring a bit here to find the right position. Alright. Oh, I think... Alright, so right about here, be good, okay? So I'm just going to push in, pull back. And on the other side here, right here, going to push in and pull back. Alright. We'll just give you a moment with that. We have more pauses when it comes to the upper shoulder, the neck, the head area. We really wanna give your body just a moment to figure out what it wants to do with the information that we're giving it. Take a deep breath in for me. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Very good. And now we're gonna work... I'm gonna work kind of under your shoulder. I'm gonna work kind of under your shoulders, under your neck here, okay? So I'm just gonna find the position that I need to be in, and then we're just going to very gently push in, pull back, and push in, and pull back, okay? Push in, pull back, push in, pull back, and push in, pull back, push in, and pull back, okay? We're gonna give you a moment, and then I'd like to test your TMJ again while you're lying down here. Take a deep breath in for me. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Okay, and deep breath in. And out. Alright, so we're gonna test the TMJ in the same way we did before. I'm just gonna hold onto your hand, and remember, I wanted you to resist me pulling back on your fingers, okay? We're gonna do that same little bit, so I want you to resist me pulling back on your fingers. Okay, good, and if you could open your jaw for me? Okay, and try to resist me? Right, and go ahead and close your jaw, try to resist. And can you clench your teeth? Very good, and try to resist. Okay, alright, you can go ahead and relax your jaw, so that was good, there's not any abnormalities there, so we don't have to worry about that, that's great. So let's go ahead and move on. We're almost done with our little session here, but we've got some, a little bit more to go. So I'm gonna work behind your shoulders now. So we did behind your neck, and we're gonna kind of come behind your shoulders here. So just going to find the right position here. And then I think we're just going to go ahead and push in, pull back. And on the other side, push in, pull back. And then push in, pull back. Push in, pull back. Push in, pull back. Push in, pull back. And ignore the little kitty snores in the corner. She really picks the most opportune times to make noises. So we're gonna take a moment to relax. Take a deep breath in for me. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Very good. So we're gonna move down to your legs a bit here. So we're going to... We're gonna come by your mid thigh here, so right about here, is that okay? Alright, so I'm just going to press in here and pull back. And then the other side, just press in, pull back, okay? And then I'm just going to come down by your knee, alright? So just, just at the top of the knee here, and we're gonna press in, pull back. And on the other side, just press in and pull back, okay? And then we'll give it a moment. If you'd like to take a deep breath in for me? And out. Very good, okay. Let's work on your hips here. This'll be pretty quick, it's just two positions. So I'm going to go ahead and just press in here and pull back. And on the other side, we're gonna press in and pull back, okay? We're gonna take another deep breath. And out. Deep breath in. And out. Okay, very good. So now I just want to... Almost gonna be stretching your legs a bit again. So I'm gonna grab your leg, and I'm just going to scooch your foot along the table, okay? So that your knee comes up, but your foot's still resting on the table. And then we're going to bring your leg back so that your leg is coming closer and closer to your abdomen, alright? And then I'm just going to bring your leg all the way up, so that it's straight in the air, as far as it'll go. And then we're just gonna bring that back down, okay? Just like that. I'm gonna grab your other leg and do the same thing. We're just going to guide it along the table so that your knee folds. And then I'm gonna bring that in, bring your leg in towards your chest here. And then we're going to take your leg and move that so it's straight up in the air. And then bring it back down to the table, okay? Alright, so we're gonna do a few last positions, and then we're gonna go ahead and end the session, okay? Alright, so I'm gonna get in right, right in your chest. Your chest has some muscles towards the side, and they can get very tense, very tight here. So I'm just going to work on those. I'm just gonna press in, pull back, press in, pull back, press in, pull back, press in, pull back. Just like that, right? And that will do it, so I'm gonna have you take a few last deep breaths for me, okay? Take a deep breath in. And out. Deep breath in. And out. And lastly, deep breath in. And out. Very good, very good, very good. I'm gonna give you a moment, and when you're ready, I'd like you to just very gently come to sitting, okay? Just move one body part at a time. Don't want you to get too dizzy, okay? Alright, and I will meet you up here when you are ready to sit up, okay? Hey, how you feeling? Okay, little loose, little limp, alright? Are you feeling any dizziness or any lightheadedness at all? Okay, well, we'll have you just sitting here for a moment, and we'll give you, we'll give you a second. Sometimes you can feel a little, a little woozy after being laid down for so long, alright? So before we let you go, I'm gonna do a final assessment of your body to see if there was any improvement after our Bowen treatment, okay? So whenever you're ready, you can just go ahead and step down from the massage table and just stand in front of me, okay? Yep, just take your time. Alright, that's great. So what I'm gonna have you do is I want you to just walk back and forth from either end of the room, and I want you to just look straight ahead, okay? Just keep looking forward, don't look at me, right? And I'm just going to watch you as you walk back and forth, okay? Alright. Mm-hmm. Very good, okay, if you wanna come back right in front of me? Okay, great, so I can definitely see that you look like you're standing a bit taller. How do you feel, by the way, when you're walking? Do you feel a little bit more straightness in your back? Are you feeling anything different in your neck and shoulders? Yeah, your shoulders are definitely a lot lower than when you first came in, so that's a really good sign. And let's see. Okay. So your head looks like it's just back a little bit farther, so that's good. Alright, you look like you're, you're a little bit more in alignment, which is really good. And I think that we could probably do another, maybe one or two sessions, and we can really address that concern. And I think we'll make some really good headway on that. So we'll just do little adjustments to remind your body that it needs to keep the shoulders down and open, and keep your head nice and straight with your spine, okay? Just little reminders, and I think you will be in very good shape, okay? So do you have any final questions for me at all? Okay, yeah, it's not like any other typical therapies. It really can take one session, or we may do more, just depending on the type of concern that we're addressing. It doesn't usually take too much time at all because we're just giving your body little reminders. We're not doing anything, we're not manipulating anything necessarily. We're just letting your body take care of itself and just giving it reminders on how to do that. So your body's doing all the work, it's not necessarily me. Mm-hmm. Alright, so if you don't have any more questions, then we can go ahead and end the session there, and I hope to see you back for another one, okay? Thank you so much for coming in today and doing this session with me, I really appreciate it. Alright, I hope you have a whale of a day and a good rest of your night. Thank you. Goodbye now. Thank you so much for watching, I really appreciate it. Please like this video if you want to. Comment if you'd like to, and subscribe if you wanna see more. My socials are linked in the description of all my videos, and also on our little head screen here. Please consider being one of my patrons on Patreon if you'd like to see more of my content and like to help a little bit with the channel. Thank you so much for being here. I hope you have a whale of a day and a good rest of your night.